Okay.
Call call.
Pauls.
Here.
Palermo.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Mr. President.
Yes. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation today by Councilmember Amy Melton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we, I didn't have time to make it back to my office.
Okay.
So, I would like to reserve something for next, for next week if I may, Mr. President. And I would like to take the opportunity today on our, this is being the 10-year anniversary of the Vonmar shooting. It's something that we can all reflect on. I know it's something that affected our entire community. I remember it well. I think everybody in Omaha can remember where they were at when they, when they heard about the tragedy. But I think what we can make of that and what we saw through that tragedy was the wonderful work that our first responders do for our community. That we had officers, including Officer Baker, who was able to run in there not thinking of their own lives, first responders coming in afterwards who had to deal with the trauma of seeing, of seeing the victims and then have to deal with the poor victims' families. But we have great first responders in our community. And so, and today I would like to just take a little time to remember the victims of that tragedy and also remember those first responders who did just such a wonderful job for our city in dealing with that. And I'm just thankful to know that they're here for us now in the event, and hopefully we'll never have something like that again, but in the event they do. And I know we have some first responders here in the audience and retired first responders, and I want to thank all of those who are here today. And if we could just take a moment to reflect on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for, thank you very much.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this city council meeting. The council thanks you for joining us this afternoon. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would like for you to please turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Before we begin the major portion of our, our agenda today, we have a proclamation, very special proclamation, let me add, that we would like to read up first, and our, our council vice president, Mr. Chris Jerem, is going to read the proclamation for a very esteemed gentleman who's been with us. He and I have walked so many picket lines, I think we've forgotten how many we did, but for Terry Moore. And I will turn the floor over to our, our council vice president, Mr. Chris Jerem.
And before reading it, I'd like to thank all my colleagues for their unanimous support of this and, and, but particularly Councilman Rich Pauls, who was instrumental in getting this going and requesting it be on the agenda. So, with that, whereas Terry Moore is a native Omaha, a South High graduate and a veteran of the Army Reserves, and whereas Mr. Moore spent his early working life as a laborer for 15 years in Omaha's packing houses and factories, and whereas in 1976, Mr. Moore became president of the Omaha Federation of Labor, where he served as a tireless advocate for Omaha's labor force and mentor to local labor leaders while also working to forge positive relationships with the business community, and whereas Mr. Moore served 29 terms as a member or chairman on community service organization boards and committees, most notably contributing to Septemberfest Salute to Labor, United Way of the Midlands, the Salvation Army, and Exarban Future Trust, and whereas Mr. Moore served on 22 different business organizations in a variety of roles, including 15 years as director for the Federal Reserve Bank of Kansas City, a member of the Metropolitan Entertainment and Convention Authority Board, and numerous other state and local business boards and committees, and whereas education was another area of Mr. Moore's focus, serving 12 terms as a member or chair of education organizations, including an instrumental role starting the William Brennan Institute for Labor Studies at the University of Nebraska at Omaha, and serving on the President's Council at Creighton University, and whereas his love for the arts led him to serve on four arts organization boards, including the Jocelyn Art Museum Board, and whereas Mr. Moore has been recognized with numerous honors and awards, including recognition by President Reagan with a Volunteer Action Award, President George H.W. Bush with a Thousand Points of Light Award, the Joseph Byrne Community Service Award from United Way Worldwide, the Nebraska Governors Distinguished Leaders Award, the South High Hall of Fame, and many others, and whereas after 41 years as president of the Omaha Federation of Labor, Terry Moore is leaving that role and will focus on his duties as president of Labor United, a nonprofit focused on promoting education, financial stability, and health, and whereas we commend Mr. Moore for his commitment to Omaha's labor, business, community service, education, and arts communities, and thank him for his many years of service to our community. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Omaha salutes Terry Moore and designates Tuesday, December 5, 2017, as Terry Moore Day in the city of Omaha, whereof we have set our hands and caused the official city seal to be affixed this fifth day of December 2017. And I'm sure there's others, as you work your way up and I bring this around, that would like to say some things to you, but first, we'd like to hear from you.
I, first off, I'm humbled and honored. One of the greatest things any of us can do and all of you as public servants is to serve our community, and that's a wonderful thing. And I've been able to do that for 41 years and 10 months. And I've worked very hard just then, I just come overnight. I searched for someone that could do the job that I've done and do it even better than me, and I selected and trained Mike McDonald, who was the past president of the Firefighters' Local Union and fire chief of the city, and now is a state senator on appropriations committee. He is going to be a great leader and take the labor movement to another level. Each one of you in front that you have is an envelope from me, which is about Labor United. I'm going to be spending most of my time with Labor United. It's something that I started five years ago as a 501(c) not-for-profit organization to help our community. And what we've done in those five years, and it's all documented and detailed in, through every point, the records that we've kept, is through in-kind services, through the largest food drive the city has that fills all the pantries for at least nine to 10 months, and all the other projects, heat's on, going into elderly's homes and others to make sure their furnaces are serviced, they get filters, on and on, the tree of lights that you see on 90th and Dodge Street, that's, we do that every year, and that's with the operating engineers, the ironworkers, the electricians, the laborers, all participate in that every year as in-kind services. In front of each and every one of you, you have documentation showing you over the last five years, we've contributed over $26 million in in-kind services to the city, as well as raising money for the United Way. And so, I will be finishing out in my twilight years, continuing to work in that endeavor to help our community. I, I'm very, you know, I go, as many of you know, I, I go back to the days of Gene Leahy and being a part of the Central Park Mall and worked on all the projects that we've had, the riverfront, and will continue to do that. And as you all know, the next drive on this riverfront for the next 20 years is going to really do great things for our city. And I could really compliment each and every one of you for that endeavor, because it's going to make us the city we want. The other thing we're going to do through Labor United is, my goal is, hopefully, I can put five educators on staff, and I want to go into the eighth grade through high school and college to give children, young adults, an opportunity to decide what they may want to do. And there are so many good avenues in, in factory work, welders, in the building and construction trades, to where they can have the opportunity, they understand that they have to understand, if they want to do that, they have to understand math, they're going to have to apply themselves to that, but they can make $60,000 to $70,000 a year. They can have a trade that's portable anywhere in the world and have a successful life for them and their family and be a taxpayer, a good citizen in our city. That's going to be on the, my main mission of what I'm going to try to do. It's, young people just don't have all the opportunities confronted them. It's more than just going to college. And college is fine. Anybody that wants to go to college, that's great, but there's other options they can do. If they want to learn to weld, be an electrician, a plumber, a steamfitter, if they want to work in a factory and make a good living for them and their families, we're going to give them those choices that they can choose to do that. That's going to be up to them. Right now, they're not getting those opportunities confronted in front of them. If we're lucky enough to put five people together to go into these schools and talk to these young people and give them an opportunity to say, here, if you want to do this, we're going to help you. And if it means we have to mentor them, we will mentor them. We'll find people from different local unions to make sure they're there to help them through that course if they want to do it. Thank you, each and every one of you, and I'd, I'd ask you to help us in Labor United, and also I'd like to make sure and ask you if you would, to work with Mike McDonald, who's a bright young man and, and wants to build this community, and work with him, because he's a good asset to us. Thank you.
Terry, I know we've got a couple of folks that may want to just add, add some additional comments today, and one of them I know is Mr. Festerson, so I will call him Mr. Festerson first.
Thanks, Mr. President. Terry, I just wanted to say also thank you for your service and your numerous civic contributions. That deserves repeating, $26 million over the last four years, that's pretty amazing stuff. And I know by your remarks there, we haven't heard the last from you either when it comes to Labor United and Count Me In. I think we go back about 20 years together professionally, whether I was at the Chamber of Commerce or in the mayor's office, or as a city councilperson on the United Way or, or even in business. Your impact on me and I think the community has been substantial. And there's many people that go back a lot longer than that, so I consider myself fortunate to have, to have been able to work with you. But the most important thing I want to say to you today as a friend is I've, I've admired your dedication and perseverance as a, as a husband and a father and a grandfather. I think that's something we could all learn from, from your, from your example. I think Mr. McDonald does have big shoes to fill, but fortunately, he does have big shoes. So, I look forward to working with him as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't see any more lights right now. First of all, I'd like to recognize Senator Mike McDonald from the 5th Legislative District in South Omaha. Welcome to our city council meeting today, and, and we wish you a lot of luck. Terry, I just, just wanted to say that, as Councilmember Festerson said, you and I are two guys that go back a very long way. And as the former president, well, I had another life before city council, and I was in television, and as the former president, vice president, and shop steward of the American Federation of Television and Radio Artists, you were one of our, one of our strongest allies and supporters in the television business, and, and I know those of us who were in the business at that time really appreciate your efforts, really appreciate your work. I was thinking on my way here today when we were, we knew we were going to do the proclamation, and I was thinking about how cold it was getting outside. It reminded me of some of those cold days when you and I were out. Yeah, so, but congratulations, and we wish you a lot of luck and a lot of support in that effort, and anything I can do for you, please don't hesitate to call. Thank you. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, the world is sort of divisive. Everybody seems to be at each other. Makes me think of Terry Moore when I first met him. I had just retired as a school principal, and I thought I was going to run for the state legislature. So, I started talking to people. I said, who's some of the people I should get to know? And they said, well, you should probably get to know Terry Moore. And I thought to myself, well, I belong to this party, he belongs to that party, but I did have a meeting with him, and I met with his group of individuals, and I said they asked him pretty tough questions, but I left that meeting knowing what their goal was, to provide jobs. That was the goal, I kept hearing that. So, I said, this doesn't sound too bad. Then I was invited to the public, to the plumbers' hall at a meeting. I thought to myself, boy, should I be going to this meeting? You know, I said, yeah, this, this could be a little, with my party, they could question me. So, I go to the meeting, and guess who, at this meeting on F Street, I walked in and low and behold, I saw Governor Johansson there. And Chris Peterson, who's one of the big consultants, Republican consultants, I saw them at this meeting with all these union people, I said, well, you know, the world must not be too bad at all. And it was sort of a jovial meeting, and I, I listened and all that kind of good stuff, and, you know, as the years gone, have gone by, then I decided I'd run for city council, because I could only run for eight years as a state senator. So, then I started asking, well, because I knew the mayor, it's, she was a city councilperson, she was going to run for mayor, and she did get it, which was good. I asked a couple of people, who should I be talking to? And one who was a good friend of mine, Governor Heineman, and he said, Rich, one of the people you should talk to if you're going to run for city council, guess who? Terry Moore. So, I thought to myself, here we have, it goes to show you that we can work together. We may have disagreements, but if from two powerful Republican governors are telling me basically, hey, work together. And, and I thought that was a good sign, and that's what I, actually what I continue to do today is, is not look at a person, whether you're this party or this party, but let's see if we can get something done. So, I think of the city of Omaha, and I think of all of the job opportunities you have helped with individuals, I want to thank you for what you've done and what you're going to do. Thank you.
Mr. Jerem?
Yeah, just a couple of things I wanted to say, couldn't get away that easy. You know, a lot of people know Terry as a force within the labor movement and armed with facts and information and a passion that's second to none. He was a tireless leader and will be going forward with Labor United. But a couple anecdotes, may, you may not know, Terry is a constituent of mine, so, you know, as a constituent, he has the, like all of you and your constituents, and we hear from them from time to time, but I have this dual role with him as not only advocate for labor, but then constituent. But if that didn't make things interesting for about 20 years, Terry, his office was next door to mine, and he would know if I was there or not before calling me, because he was on the fourth floor in his office, and he could see in the parking lot whether my car was there. So, he'd, he'd call on, from time to time on very important issues to, to share his perspective, and he'd say, are you, are you there? I need to talk to you. This is a very important, very important conversation I need to have you. And before you answer, I can see you standing outside your office. I said, all right, come on over. Well, that was just something I always got a kick out of. So, now I'm at 90th and Dodge, and you can't see me. But the, the other thing I wanted to share is that what is not on the proclamation, there's only so much room in this, is Terry's, through adversity, turning remarkable personal tragedy into movements that improve society. Tragically losing a grandchild in a fire and championing the cause for minimum fire protection standards in communities in the city, which ultimately led to professional firefighters in the city of Bellevue. Championing the personal challenges with having a son with developmental disabilities into convincing employers that everyone deserves a shot, and if you give it to them, they can contribute to the work environment, like Terry Junior did for decades in the halls of this, of this building. And then also with his beloved Tanya and the struggles that she went through with leukodystrophy. There's no stronger advocate in the face of struggle and personal tragedy than what you see here. And so, no matter what each one of us might be going through, and as difficult as a time as it seems, here's an example of someone that found a way to summon the strength, mostly through faith, no doubt through friends, but he's turned horrible circumstances into personal triumph. And I want to thank you.
Thank you. Again, Senator, you're always welcome to join us at a city council meeting, and Terry, you're always welcome as well, and anything you need, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Madam Clerk?
We're still here for you, so we're on a phone call away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Item six, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement with the Lerner Company for West Village Point located southeast of 180th Street and West Dodge Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial of a major amendment to remove all pedestrian trails and trail connections in Outlets C and D. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval of everything else.
Public hearing agenda, item number six is today, proponents, please. Seeing none of their any, oh, proponent? Seeing none of their any opponents?
My name is Ann Crabtree, and my husband and I, we live at 330 South 178th Avenue. It's up from the south of the Village Point West Development, where they are planning to put a bicycle and a walking trail approximately 10 feet from the side of our house. It's from the deck, and we bought this house because of the location being so private and quiet. That was 15 years ago. Then a few years later, they started grading for this development, and the developers promised to us that Village, or the Pacific Springs, they promised to leave a berm and to plant some trees along the berm so we wouldn't hear the noise and all the stuff that goes on down there. And Mr. Lerner promises to us, and he did what he said he was going to do. We left, we have a berm and we have all these trees, and they're just beautiful now. They're blue spruce, and they give us a lot of protection. Well, we learned that they're going to put this trail in, so we thought, that's all right. So, at our home meeting last fall, we, I asked, just where is this going to be? And they said, well, it's going to be behind the berm and go down to 180th Street. Well, I thought, that's, that's fine. It won't bother us, but somehow or other, it got changed, and they decided to put it right next to our house. We can sit on the deck and we can almost reach down and touch someone that's walking by. So, I became very upset about it, because, and I'm not used to talking in front of people, so. So, but anyway, I would like to see if there's some other way that they could have that trail. I don't mind the trail, but I just don't want it right on top of our house. And so, I, we, I, they, when I saw it was going to be down below, then I thought, well, I won't bother with it. But then, not too long later, my husband was in the hospital, and I was down with him quite a bit, and when I came home, here were bulldozers bulldozing the berm or part of the berm. And I asked him, what, what are you doing? And he said, well, we're, this is where the burns, or where the trail is going to go. And I said, what? I said, I, I didn't know that. And so, anyway, immediately, he said, well, we'll stop until you find out more about it. So, I did, I got on the phone the next day, and I called different people that I thought somebody said that I should call. So, I called the plant, city planning, and I called the mayor's hotline. Somebody said to call that, I did that. Anyway, the city planning said, well, they didn't know anything about it, they hadn't, this, hadn't heard that, because there is one down on 180th Street. There's a, a trail, he said. So, I said, no, this isn't it, this is up here. So, anyway, then I called other places and, and left a message, and nobody would call me back. I called Lerner Company, because I knew they were the developers, and, and they gave us the berm and everything way back in several years ago. And so, I talked to a gal there, and she said, oh, no, we don't, we don't have anything to do with that anymore. And I said, oh, I thought, no, it was sold. So, she told me to call the city planning again. So, I did, and nobody got back. And it's just going to be a mess, because if that goes right by our house, the, you know, they, right now, we have a cul-de-sac, and people park there, and I pick up bottles and paper and everything every once in a while in the morning after somebody's been out there at night. And so, I know what it's going to be like right outside of our house. So, the planning, then a fellow from the planning department finally called me, and he said, well, they had another location that they were going to, a different plan, but they changed it, they're going to, I know, this is what they're going to do. And so, he said I should come here, but it, it just, it's, those beautiful trees are just so pretty, and I, they, they were small, and then, and now they're up where they protect us from the north wind and from the noise down below, which isn't too bad yet, but more things will be going in there. But anyway, I just, I just can't believe that they're going to take all those trees out. That's my main thing, is those trees. And so, anyway, I wanted to let you know that we were very unhappy with that. So, I have some pictures here. I don't know if I can show them or not. Can I put them on here to show you how close it is?
Face up.
Face up.
Oh, face up. See, that's the side of our house. That, that stake that is there, it's going to be, these are going to be eight feet wide, they say. So, it'll be four feet on top, on the other side, closer to our house than that stake is. And that's our garage door right there. Then here's another one. Oh, face up. There's our deck. Now, see, I, I have been mowing the berm and everything to keep it looking nice, and I planted flowers all along there last, last year and before, and so I've kept it looking nice, but that's here nor there. And then, here's, I don't have too many of these. Here's our deck, and that's where we sit out there. And so, anybody walking by will either join us on the deck or, or whatever. But anyway, I probably won't invite a man, but anyway, that's what I do. So, I just wanted you to know, I have had many sleepless nights lately, so, so anyway, that's my story.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
My name's Ron Blessie, and I live across the street from Bob and Ann.
Address, please.
Pardon me?
Address.
335 South 178th Avenue.
Thank you, just for the record.
And there's approximately four houses in that circle. And over the last 12, 15 years, we paid over half a million dollars in taxes. You know, we've seen the police and Douglas County Sheriff through that property maybe five times on our hand. That's it. Had no problem. There's kids in that circle all the time. We pick up beer bottles, whiskey bottles. We do it all. We don't complain. We've never called the cops on anybody. They peek in our windows, they do that. Not a problem. I'll run them off, but some folks can't. Anyway, this walk that they got there, nobody's going to use that going from our circle to 180th Street. They have to cut that berm down and make that on there. And they're not, they're not coming up 100 feet up that hill and walking to 180th Street. They're not going to do it. This is ridiculous. I can't believe that somebody would actually put that in, that they have to put that sidewalk. There's no, if they have to put the sidewalk to get down to Village Point, go on the northeast corner, straight along the trees and straight down, it's a straight shot, and come up to the circle. But in the back of those houses, to make those people put fences up to protect their property from everybody else, it's ridiculous. You guys got to do something about that. I mean, you, you'll fix something if it's working. We had to fix the Big Red, but we don't have to fix this. That's what I got to say, folks.
Thank you.
It cannot be.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
My name's Alan Meyer. I'm at 17848 Harney Street. Our west house faces 178th Avenue, so we're just next to Blessie's and down the street from Crabtree. I'm not opposed to trails and walking paths, but they need to go somewhere. And the one that you're proposing here goes to nowhere. It, it doesn't attach to any other trail system in the city of Omaha. There's already an adequate sidewalk along 180th, 168th, and 174th enters Village Point West from Pacific Springs, and there are sidewalks along it. So it isn't as though pedestrians can't get around the area and have a place to walk without this trail. They do have and have had for several years. So without it being part of an overall trail system, I, I don't get the need for why there should even be one. And if there has to be one, they certainly shouldn't build it eight or 10 foot away from somebody's deck when there are other options available to them. They don't have to be that close. And from a construction standpoint, I can't believe that going down the berm wouldn't be less expensive as well than cutting the berm down. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Do we have any others that, if, okay?
Hi, Bridgette Blessie, 335 South 178th Avenue. I just want to add something to what my husband said. The circle that we live in is, has been very private. Kids seem to come to our circle and, when the weather is warm, there's cars that, that come into that circle. They drink, they party during the summer. This sidewalk that they're proposing is just a nuisance, and it's, and I'm wondering who's going to be policing this sidewalk, especially during the summer. To me, it's a sidewalk for kids to ride their bikes, also for people to walk their dogs, and I just don't see the need for this type of sidewalk coming down in this area. And I don't understand why the city would require the Lerner Company to pay for this sidewalk, because it's my understanding that the Lerner Company just didn't want the sidewalk. But in order to go ahead and sell this piece of property, they had to connect these sidewalks as the city requires. Like Alan said, it's a, it's a sidewalk to nowhere.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'm not sure that there's anybody here to represent the proponent side, but if there is, if there, would you like some rebuttal time, sir? Please.
Jay Lerner, 9305 Capitol Avenue.
Thank you.
Some of you I know, others I don't. As you might expect, I've been up here a number of times over the years, and I didn't anticipate saying anything today, but let me just explain that years ago, when we originally got the deal approved, we agreed to do a trail. And the trail was along kind of a area that's very treed and they're outlots, really. And that was many years ago, it was probably 18 years ago, or 14 years ago. And when it came time now to do the trail, we worked with the Planning Department and worked through some issues, and I appreciate working with Dave and the Planning Department. And I agreed to do, and agreed with Dave that this is what the city wanted, and this is what we agreed to do. So I just want you all to know that this isn't something we came up with out of the blue. It was something that we agreed, had to do with the trail system, had to do with parks and recreation. And when the City Planning Department finally said this is what I'll agree to, I said, okay. So from, from my standpoint, I'm willing to do what the Planning Department wants us to do, and I'm happy to do it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Harding, I, well, let me officially close the public hearing. Mr. Harding, I was going to ask the Planning Department to, you know, kind of assess the reason for the trail and so forth. Did you want to ask your question first?
No, you, you can go ahead and do that, because I think part of my comments were going to be what you're, what you'll probably hear from the Planning Department then. So I'll, I'll cede that until Mr. Fensel is done, and then weigh in if I, if I need to.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fensel, I guess the, the question to you is the concern about the trail. And I think for the benefit of the, those in the audience who have concerns about this, as well as the council, it might not be a bad idea to just lay out the intent of, of why the trail isn't, why, why the trail needs to be there based on the Planning Department recommendation.
Sure. Dave Fensel, Planning Director. Like Jay said, this development was approved and worked on a number of years ago. And at that time, 178th Avenue, which is actually a cul-de-sac, wasn't required to go through north to Burke Street. So as part of the agreement back in the early 2000s was to still have some kind of connectivity between the neighborhood and the businesses, which is West Village Point to the north. So the department, obviously Planning Board and City Council's approved a mixed-use development plan for West Village Point. Throughout the years, we've kind of kicked the can down the road, if you will, as far as the trail system. And Jay's right, a couple of years ago, Jay came, back when I was Assistant Director, came to talk to me about not only this trail, which is an Outlet D, but there was a trail that was proposed in Outlet C, and that's the wooded area, excuse me, just west of Madonna Hospital. After some negotiation, negotiation and some conversations, I met Mr. Lerner out at the site, took a look at Outlet C, looked at the surrounding other connectivity points that are north of Burke, between Burke and Chicago, looked at the challenges of Outlet C, and came to an agreement that the department would entertain an application and review an application that removed the trail from Outlet C, which again is north of Burke, between Burke and Chicago, just west of the Madonna Hospital. But we still felt that the original intent of the trail from 178th Avenue to Burke Street was important. There's not many connecting streets on the south side of Burke as there are on the north side of Burke. So we still felt that was important. It's, I think it's important to note, too, that the trail's always been shown, connecting 178th Ave. and Burke Street. In 2014, as part of a major amendment, the trail was shown in the location, the general location that it is now. So that's kind of the history. What's before, I guess I note that what's before you is, the major amendment is to remove the trail from Outlet C. The major amendment didn't really identify or analyze this existing trail that's always been shown. So the reason for the major amendments is because Mr. Lerner wanted to remove the trail from Outlet C, which again is north of Burke. I, while I have the mic, I'd like to say that staff has talked to Mrs. Crabtree over the last several weeks, if not a couple of months, received it, received a phone call from her, and did a lot of behind-the-scenes work with Mr. Lerner, talked to the folks who are building the Core Bank Building to the, to the north of this, as well as Mr. Lerner's engineer, trying to, trying to work up some different solutions that maybe would make at least the Crabtrees happy, because that's who Todd had talked to. After, after we had those conversations with those parties, we did return the phone call, came up with an alternate solution, and so that brings us today, I guess. And there is an, there is an alternate route that we have been told would work, that is ADA accessible. If you've been out to the site, and I've been out to the site since this issue came up, it's quite a hill. So one of our concerns, one of my concerns was, you know, you can show something on paper, but if it doesn't work in the real world, then what good is it? So we made sure that any alternate trail system or the trail system that was planned would be ADA compliant. The planned trail or sidewalk would connect, again, 178th Ave. to Burke Street, which then obviously has a, a, a network of sidewalks, existing sidewalks that it would connect to, so. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Harding, did you, had, did that answer your, I mean, or do you still want to?
Sure. I, I, I wanted to make sure that it was also clear that really what's before us today is, is kind of addressing that, which is north of Burke Street, which I, I think Mr. Fensel did. I also wanted to make sure that it was understood that there's a possibility for an alternate route. But I guess a question that I might have for, for the director is, first of all, if, if you could tell us exactly where we are status-wise of this path, is, is it still, has the construction on it ceased?
Dave Fensel, City Planning. I believe so. That's what I was told, Mrs. Crab, from what I understand. That's what I was, was told, basically the same thing Mrs. Crabtree said, is that they had started working on it and had stopped until we get to this point here. I'm not sure how far along they are or what they've graded them.
So the, the alternate path is, I believe, I'll ask Mrs. Crabtree to come up if, if you wouldn't mind, I'll. Thank you.
Just, if you could, if you could.
Oh, no, sorry. And then just, if you could, give us your name and address again for the record.
My, I dress?
Yes.
330 South 178th Avenue.
Okay. Ann Crabtree.
Ann Crabtree and Bob Crabtree.
Okay. Thank you. So have you had a chance to, to see the alternate path that has been discussed?
No. And, you know, when they came out there, I thought maybe they'd knock on my door and talk to me, but nobody did.
Okay.
And so I have not seen the other path, but they told me, there was a nice gentleman from, from the Planning Committee that called me finally, and he was very nice, and, and he said that there was another place that they could put it, but they wanted this one. So, you know, and so, anyway, if they take that berm down and all those trees, we're going to be sitting right there to see everything.
So if, if I could, please just stay there in case I have some more questions, but, but thank you. And I, and I know, I, I'm not sure, you know, your, your neighbors probably share the same feelings, so I'll, I'll kind of rely on you to be their spokesperson.
And more down the, there's more that, that could come.
Right. So, Mr. Fensel, again, I think on this alternate route, is, as I understand it, some of the issues might be, you know, who, who pays for, how much of it, what's the cost differential from the, the path that is currently under construction but suspended? And how might, how might that all be accomplished?
Dave Fensel, City Planning, yeah. Councilman Harding, I think that's what we've been told, is that the alternate route, which pulls it away to the, further to the north than it was planned, again, a number of years ago, we've been told, kind of unofficially, that there will be some additional cost we don't have, we didn't ask for, and if we did, we didn't get, I don't know if anybody really knows what the extra cost would be. We don't, just so it's clear, the Planning Department prefer, doesn't prefer, we don't care what option is, is put in. We do, we are sensitive to what the neighbors would like, and I guess if there's an alternate route that works, that makes the pedestrian connection to Burke Street, and that is more satisfactory to the neighbors, we would be willing to entertain that. But it wasn't, the, the alternate plan was never officially submitted to our department. It was part of those conversations over the last, I'll say, six weeks, that the engineer, one of the engineers working for the applicant provided to us. I'm not sure who else that was shared with, but again, it was never part of an official submission.
So the, the action we have here today, just, just a minute, please. The action we have here today, if, if we were to go ahead, ahead and make the major amendment, it really, again, addresses only that that's north of Burke Street, correct?
Correct.
And that it still leaves the opportunity, where the door opened, for us to continue to figure out whether or not we can do the, the optional path, if you will, or optional route, as, as we discover if it costs more, or if it does, how, how that might be paid for. But that, again, isn't, that could be a separate issue than, than what we have here today, correct?
Correct. And, and I'll say that the Planning Department's willing to sit down and, and work on an alternate plan, and if this, the alternate plan that we have unofficially is truly ADA accessible, which we've been told, we would be willing to sign a building permit for that trail.
Okay. Thank you.
So this plan that you have now, it, it comes, I've never really seen that, but the people that were doing the bulldozer thing showed me. It was just going to go up, they cut the berm, and then it would, so actually, we would have eight feet here and eight feet over here, because it's going to go up here, and then it's going to come back down and go right to our sidewalk, and our driveway, and have to take out, well, there's a light fixture, light, big light pole there that they probably have to take out, and they just put that up. I don't know anything about engineering, but, but I do know that there'll be a lot of sidewalk or path there, and, and about costs, we will have some costs, because our value of our house will go down. Then I'll have to call somebody and see if we can get our taxes reduced.
I like your thinking. Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree. Sir, if you could come up for a second.
Alan Meyer, again, from 17848 Harney Street. The Planning Department talked about connectivity between 178th Avenue and Burke Street, and I'm not opposed to that, but the trail we're talking about that goes next to their house actually runs east and west, from 178, the end of 178th Avenue circle to the west to 180th Street. It won't connect to Burke unless you walk to 180th, and then north on 180th. So I'm not really sure it's addressing the, the connectivity issue that the Planning Department talks about. Again, it's going the opposite direction.
Okay. Thank you. So again, I want to make it clear that. So, again, I want to make it clear that what we're, really, the major amendment that we're considering here really is addressing that outlot that is north of Burke for the elimination of that path. And then, what I'd like to do is at least be on the record to say that maybe the planning department and the Lerner Company and some of the neighbors can get together to look at the alternatives of where that, if there's an alternate route, and if that's possible, and how that might be accomplished. And before I conclude my comments, I'd like to ask Mr. Lerner to come up, if you could, please.
Thank you.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry, J. Lerner, 9305 Capitol Avenue. There was an alternate trail plan that was submitted to the city. It takes away, the reason is obviously a terrible grade issue there. When you come up 100 feet and to be ADA compliant, you can't come up like this, you got to go like this. And so, that last loop was the loop that we're talking about to get their, to get ADA compliant. We have submitted, has been a submission that takes that last loop off behind their yard and comes up more in the middle of the cul-de-sac. I've been told by our engineers that that is, will be ADA compliant, and we're happy to put it anywhere you want it. That is satisfactory to the neighbor, satisfactory to the planning department, and I don't have an issue with that. Obviously, cost is an issue, but I don't think the cost will be, I mean, unless you run it all the way to 180th Street. It does not go to 180th, by the way, it just loops around there. But we're happy to put it anywhere that works and that's ADA compliant, and so that's not, that's not an issue, we can agree on that with the planning department. But relative to the overall, what we're asking the amendment, I agree with you on we're passing the deletion on the other outlot.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lerner.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you. There are no further lights, is...
I want to try to make something clear.
Yes, Ms. Lerner.
My vote and for the people that are sitting here, just so that they understand it's clear, I think I listened to everything that was said today, and it's my understanding, my vote is just, we're going to eliminate the need for the trail on C. We're not voting for the trail that's going behind the Crabtree's house today, we're just voting on whether they can eliminate the trail. Am I clear on that?
Mr. Fansla, I think that's accurate.
Dave Fansla, Planning Director, yes, Amy, it's...
My yes vote is not for this trail, my yes vote is to eliminate it on C, and nobody's here even talking about that.
In the original document and in amendments throughout the years, both trails have been shown, one in Outlet D, one in Outlet C. The most recent agreement eliminates, and what's before you today, eliminates the need for the trail in Outlet C.
Okay, so we're only voting on eliminating the trail for C. And then today, I think what Councilman Harding just said is, he just wanted on the record that our expectation is that we're not going to do anything on D with this trail, that work has been suspended, and I guess, I guess it'll kind of be up to the neighbors to contact Mr. Harding or our office in the event that they can't reach an agreement on the trail that goes by the Crabtrees on Outlet D. Is that, everybody's understanding?
That's, that's understanding. Mr. Fansla.
Is that your understanding? I just wanted to try and get a nod of yes from the people that took the time to come down here, so that it looks like, I just wanted you to know we heard you.
Mr. Fansla.
There's an existing agreement that places that trail in Outlet D, I think, if, well, I guess, I guess, there's an existing agreement that proposes a trail from 178th Avenue to Burke Street. So I guess I'm a little cautious of saying, yeah, we'll work on an alternate route, but we're not at the liberty right now to eliminate that trail. So, there's an approved plan that was approved by council, the latest one was in 2014 that has that trail in that location, so, in that general location, so, I just wanted to be clear about that.
Well, that makes us money.
So the question, let me, let me, let me, again, clarification. So if we, if we voted to support this today, this would at least in concept, support that trail or not? No?
I don't, Dave Fansla City Planning, you're, in my opinion, you're not even voting on the trail in Outlet D today, you're just voting on the elimination of the trail in Outlet C.
Okay.
The other, the trail in Outlet D is already required as part of the original mixed-use development agreement.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Mr., well, Ms. Melton, let me get rid of hers, and then Mr. Harding, you go ahead.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, as Ms. Melton said, we wanted to make sure that the neighbors understood that we're listening, and this is, again, for that that is north of Burke Street, and that the trail in Outlet B is something that we're going to work on to see if there's an alternate route that can work. But again, our action today really has nothing to do with that that is south of Burke Street, but I wanted it on the record.
Okay, okay, I think we've got it now. Is there a motion? There are no more lights, is there a motion? Second, no further lights, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, an application to consider a Class C liquor license with Restaurants Inc. doing business as Taxis Grill and Bar located at 1822 North 120th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, John Wade, 16918 K Street, I'm the Director of Operations for Restaurants Inc.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item seven, no lights, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, Shoddy Inc. doing business as Billy Frogs located at 1120 Howard Street, request permission for an addition to their Class C liquor license for an area approximately 21 feet by 128 feet to the east.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today, proponents, please.
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, I forget what my address is, somewhere on South Center. I think it's actually 2804 South 87th Avenue, but I couldn't think of it at first. This is just an addition to Billy Frogs, you know, market, a private party room, no other changes at all, so.
Thank you.
We're here for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, Mr. Jerome.
Yes, when the Woolworth lofts were constructed, Billy Frogs lost the upstairs, so they're just moving something to the, to the next door, so that's what this is about.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moving to second to approve item eight, there are no further lights, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, an application to appoint Tony S. Rigger as manager of Natural Grounds LLC, doing business as Oma's Deli to their Class C liquor license located at 1217 Leavenworth Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, my name's Tony Rigger, we're at 1217 Leavenworth, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, no lights.
Moving to second to approve item nine, no lights, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an application to appoint Jeff M. Gore is manager of Smoke Ring Inc. doing business as Copacabana to their Class CCS liquor license located at 17520 Wright Street, Suites 107 to 108.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today, proponents, please.
Mr. President, again, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This is Jeff Garot, and he is the grandson of the famous pal Garot, who ran garots here in this city. I know some of you remember this, and they were, they were great restaurants. He is the manager, proposed to be the new manager at Copacabana, and no one personally, and you couldn't have a better one. We're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item 10, no lights, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, an application to appoint Rosemary Apprich as manager of Attitude on Food Inc. doing business as Attitude on Food to their Class D liquor license located at 2405 N Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today, proponents, please.
Rosemary Apprich, 7600 Serum Avenue, Elston.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item 11, no lights, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 12 through 15 were held on November 21st, 2017. We will be removing from the consent agenda item number 13. Mr. Festus.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll support all these items, I just wanted to take a second to highlight number 14. I think it's significant in the respect of our efforts towards addressing behavioral health in the community that we've been talking about in the last several weeks. I want to thank Chief Schmodder for this item and for following through on what will be a federal grant, over $75,000 in cooperation with some local philanthropic partners, who I want to recognize also, the Scott Foundation and the Kim Foundation, to further enhance crisis intervention training with all of our law enforcement agencies in the metro area, but in particular the Omaha Police Department, given that we're asking so much of them in that respect and what we see every day on the streets. This, of course, is only one small piece of addressing mental health in the community, but I think it does complement the legislative items we've adopted and that we're working on with the legislature. So with that, I just wanted to highlight how important I think that is and move those items forward today. Thank you.
Thank you. So your motion is for 12, 14, and 15?
Yes.
Thank you. And it's moved in second to approve items 12, 14, and 15, there are no further lights, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 12, 14, and 15 are approved, seven to zero. Item 13, an ordinance to accept the bid of Abe's Trash Inc. to provide seasonal rubbish container service for the swimming pools and the recreation division in the amount of $1,832, effective for an initial period of 12 months from October 1, 2017, and renewable for two separate one-year periods.
Your motion?
Motion approved.
Moving to second to approve item 13, no lights, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerome. Councilmember Jerome passes due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 13 is approved, six to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 16 through 47 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Couple of things I might mention, first of all, we're going to take item 16 off of the consent agenda, and for the rest of the items, we know that there are a number of people here who, who may want to speak, I'd ask you to keep your comments brief, but we certainly want to hear from you, and again, many of you have been awarded resources from the city or from some other source, and the understanding from this council is the kind of work that all of you do is really tremendous work that benefits this city and continues to move it forward. So, with that, we'll open it up for a public hearing, and anyone who wants to speak certainly can.
Good afternoon, my name is Levine Dennis Williams, I'm the director, I'm in 1941 South 42nd Street. I'm the director of Reconnect Inc., and I just want to say thank you. Your support over the past three years has been a game changer for us. When we first received your initial funding three years ago, we were about ready to shut our doors down, and because of your support, we've been able to leverage our resources with others. We got recognized this year as the reentry program of the year by the Nebraska Department of Corrections, and we're scheduled to close out the year serving nearly 900 people, men and women who are in prison, who've come out of prison, or who are in the community, who are coming to us from the local jails. We'll serve about 200 youth who disconnected from services, and so, I just thank you because you have been a game changer in terms of us being able to keep our doors open and leveraging what you have given to other people, with other resources to further our program. I would add that, you know, one of the biggest, I think, benefits from the support that you've given us is now the police have an option to send people to us. We get a lot of referrals from the Omaha Gang Unit, who use their discretion instead of arresting people, to refer people to us for jobs. We got four phone calls today that Sergeant Aaron Hanson had referred to us for support and services. That's just one way you've made a difference, and so I want to thank you on behalf of Reconnect Inc. and myself personally.
Thank you. Are there any others who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Ray Fadoni, 5105 South 37th Street, for item number 39, PACE. We just want to thank the council and the mayor's office, Director Brooke Bench, and Police Department, Omaha Police Department Chief Schmodder, and Past Chief Thomas Warren for their support of the PACE program. We've been around for 12 years now, serving kids in North and South Omaha, inner-city kids with free athletics, we're about 3,000 kids right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to be heard?
Good afternoon, my name is Cecilia Creighton, 2505 North 24th Street, Suite 2111613. I'm with an organization called U-Turn, and I'm really just on behalf of our Board of Directors, gracious to the mayor and the city councilmen for approval, again, this year for funds as we address youth violence. Our organization looks at violence as a health condition, and as I know Councilman Festerson was sharing earlier about mental health conditions, behavior health and mental health are really the root cause to that violence, and we're hopeful to keep the streets safe in the North Omaha area primarily, where our work is taking us, based on the data that we are receiving from Omaha Police Department. Where in the neighborhoods, we are doing street canvassing for the highest risk for those individuals involved, primarily with shootings and homicide. That's our philosophy, is to stop the shootings. We deem ourselves as we are replicating a model called Cure Violence out of Chicago School of Public Health Institute, as change agents to work with individuals, those youth, for some mind, thought process, changes, that they can come up with other alternatives outside to deter them from violence. How do they handle conflict resolution in a peaceable, peaceable situation? So, again, on behalf of our staff and Board of Directors, U-Turn thanks you for this gracious funding.
Thank you, and Cecilia, let me add a couple of things as well. You know, first of all, the group restarted as a result of an earlier organization called Impact One. I had to say that because it started by me and a couple of other folks, but anyway, the work that you do is, I don't want people to underestimate the intensity of the work that you do, in some cases, the danger of the work that you do, but addressing it from the perspective of mental health and advancing it to a public health issue, I think were important moves that needed to be made in order for you to continue and advance the work of gang intervention. So, we thank you as well for taking on this obligation, because this is, this is some really serious, some really intense work with, and a lot of times, a lot of long hours that go along with it. But thank you for your service, thank you for your work, and thank you for the continued efforts to address our most vulnerable in our society.
Thank you, President, go ahead.
Thank you. Are there any others who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the city council, Thomas Warren, President and CEO, Urban Leader of Nebraska, 3040 Lake Street, item 39. I'd like to express my appreciation for the City of Omaha's continued support of our Youth Attendance Navigator Program. This is truly a collaborative effort. These funds are pooled together with funding from United Way of the Midlands, as well as our donor philanthropic community private foundations. We support staff at six Omaha Public Schools, four middle schools, two high schools. We support staff at six Omaha Public Schools, four middle schools, two high schools, uh, to reduce truancy and chronic absenteeism in Omaha Public Schools District. Uh, we know there's a direct correlation between school attendance and academic achievement. Uh, I can say that over ninety percent of our students have remained under the twenty absence threshold that would lead to a referral to our juvenile justice system. And one hundred percent of our seniors are on track to graduate. So again, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Hello, Matt Hoppy, two-two-four-eight South one hundred eighty-sixth Street. I'm with the Women's Center for Advancement. I wanted to thank the mayor's office and the city council for the continued support of the Women's Center for Advancement's twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week emergency crisis hotline. In twenty sixteen alone, the WCA responded to over eighty-five hundred calls from individuals experiencing domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, or stalking. The hotline begins each of these individuals' journey to safety and self-sufficiency, which would not be possible without your support. So on behalf of the WCA and the clients it serves, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Erin Porterfield, fifty-seven fifty-two Ames. I'm with Heartland Workforce Solutions. Um, thank you so much for the support to us as we are linking job seekers, career seekers, to businesses seeking talent. With the community of a unemployment rate hovering two to three percent, that is a good thing and a hard thing. Hard thing for businesses, hard thing perhaps for people who have some employment barriers. The kind of funding that you have provided us allowed us to innovate in a big way. It wasn't that long ago that Councilman Gray and, and Councilman Jerem came to us saying, "What would it be like to put something together for twenty-five people who have high employment barriers? How much might that cost? Spare no expense." And then we thought, "What if we put together a strategy with our community partners that give us tremendous results in a much bigger way, such that it's less about a particular program and it's more, much more about capacity building throughout our entire community?" So that's what we have done, and what we're seeing is this ground swell to answer the gap between career seekers and businesses seeking talent in that communication device. What is the skill needed to get to yes for the H R department? How do we know we're getting the skills that we need for our business being built? What we're seeing is just, uh, over the last nine months, about an eighty-seven percent retention rate of people who are experiencing the PRED program, Career Readiness to Eliminate Disparities, using the National Career Readiness Certificate, and also, um, focusing on the in-demand industries in our community. Again, it's a matter of connecting up, uh, career seekers with the talent opportunities available, and you have allowed us to do that. Thank you. Thank you also to Mayor Stothart and her support, and thank you for your continued support.
And thank you for the tremendous work that you have done. What, what was point, what you have pointed out is something that Councilmember Jerem and I and others have been talking about for a while in terms of chronic and generational unemployment and what we're going to do to address that, and we think you've started to do that in a really marvelous way. And thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Jamie Bergland. I'm the Executive Director of Omaha by Design, six eighteen South Eleventh Street, here in Omaha. I just want to thank you and Mayor Stothart for your generous support of our operations. I'm four months into this position, and I have been so overwhelmed by, uh, the opportunity to get to work with such great, um, public officials from all the departments, uh, not only the heads of the departments, but then also their staff, uh, as we, um, try to figure out best ways to engage and convene and educate and advocate around urban design and policy work. So excited to go into next year with exciting programming and work with all of you and those individuals and others in the community. So thanks.
Thank you, and we're going to be hearing good stuff, I know. Thank you.
Hi, I'll stand on my tippy toes here. I'm Diane Hanson. I'm the owner of Kitty Lee Dance Studio on one sixty-eight eighty Parker Plaza. Um, I'm here in part in representation of the Briar Hills business community. Um, we as a, a group of business people are not.
We are, we, 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 we want you to come in and address that in a few minutes.
Okay.
We took that off the agenda, so we're, it'll come up in a minute.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You won't get a chance, though.
Good afternoon, Councilor Marty Barnhart, Director of the Omaha Municipal Land Bank, eleven forty-one North Eleventh Street. It was in July of twenty-fourteen that I stood before you and testified for a piece of legislation that we called the Nebraska Municipal Land Bank Act. And you at that time voted unanimously to bring a land bank to Omaha, Nebraska, to be able to address code and condemnation properties, tax foreclosure properties, those that might be left through bank real estate owned, and of course, those that folks said they'd like to donate to someone, somewhere. We, since that time, have put together a policy and procedure, and I'm here today to thank you for your support all along the way. Item number forty-five lists out a grant that you were giving to us, and I thank Mayor Stothart and her staff, you, the council, and your staff. And just, I want to tell you that there are many people around the country that are contacting our office and saying, "We hear the work you're doing. We see the work you're doing. We're wondering about how you're doing that." Believe me, it's not a matter of me, it's a matter of we. We together, you, the council, we as a land bank staff, and the partnership we have with the city, the county, and many more in our city that makes us possible. So again, I say to you, thank you so much for the work you're doing for us and allowing us to work with you.
Thank you, Marty. And let me say first, let me say as well, um, I, the, the people that we have that have come and addressed us up to now, council members, have been, just in my humble opinion, they're superstars because the work that they do is far and, far and above what, what many of us had expected, and it's certainly the case with the land bank. Uh, I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to, um, spend time in, um, Charlotte, North Carolina for the National League of Cities Convention there. And I can tell you that, uh, several of the programs that exist right here in Omaha, Nebraska, were mentioned at that convention. And one of the pro, programs mentioned, most notably, was the land bank and how the land bank is operating. And there are other cities now that are looking to come to Omaha, Nebraska, to see how Marty and the team are doing their work. And I would encourage you, on the second Wednesday of the month at nine o'clock, if you get a chance, the board meetings are, are really interesting with the, with the, the people there who are showing up to purchase properties and, and to engage in this process. And, uh, I just want to thank you again and thank all of those who have, who have spoken so far because in my judgment, you are all superstars.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Council.
Hello. Um, I'm Abe Brokowski with the Latino Center of the Midlands, forty-eight twenty-one South Twenty-fourth Street. I just wanted to say thank you to the city council and to the mayor's office for your support of our Pathways to Success Program. Funding from the city allows us to have a student advocate at South High School. We're also at five other high schools, and we, uh, are added a middle school this year. It's because of funding from the city that we were able to, uh, have all nineteen of our seniors at South graduate on time last year. Fourteen are headed to college, in college right now, and eight are on a full scholarship there. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else who wish to speak?
Jennifer Krieger, Greater Omaha Chamber, thirteen oh one Harney Street. I didn't want to be the only one not saying thank you. We weren't going to get up, but you know who we are, you know what we're doing. We're here, we're here for questions if you have any. Thank you very much. Thanks to the mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Barb Rebrowich with Building Healthy Futures, one-one-five South Forty-ninth Avenue. On behalf of Building Healthy Futures and our partner, One World Community Health Centers, I would like to thank you, thank the mayor and the council for your support in a project that we're conducting at Bryan High School with freshman students. It will involve, um, a risk behavior assessment of those students and the efforts of a behavioral health specialist, who will address the challenges that those students have as they seek to be successful in their high school education. So we thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Um, I think we've heard from everyone except for on item sixteen. We're going to get back to that. Uh, but we have a couple of our council members who'd like to say a couple of words as well. Mister Festus.
Thanks, Mister President. Um, everyone's thanking us on these items today, but I feel like we should be thanking you. Um, I feel like, um, Mister Gray is correct when he calls you all superstars. Your organizations are doing some of the hardest work in the city, so we're pleased to participate with you in that, and that's something the city should be doing. And I'm glad we're taking it all, all at the same time in one day. Over a million dollars is what represents numbers thirty-five through forty-seven to support issues like violence prevention and poverty and, uh, truancy prevention and economic development and job training programs in two thousand and eighteen. And to me, this is some of the most important work we can be doing in a proactive fashion uh, to assist, uh, those in poverty, uh, address economic disparities, and, um, encourage violence prevention so that we don't have issues like other cities have experienced this year, uh, like a Kansas City, or like a Chicago, or like a Saint Louis. So, um, I'm very pleased to approve all these items today. I, I suspect they'll be unanimous. Um, and the last thing I wanted to say is although we appreciate everyone that's here today, and they all are superstars, I think there's one that won't be here after today because she's retiring, I think, today. So I just wanted to recognize her, Patty McAtee has been a longtime director of Prosper Omaha, and I, I think I helped hire you, uh, over ten years ago, so she's been at it for a long time, uh, doing economic development throughout our city. So I wanted to recognize her work and her commitment to Omaha and her presence here today, too. Thanks, Patty.
Thank you. Mister Harding.
Thanks, Mister President. Um, actually, Carl, could I have you come up, please? Um, this is Carl Anderson, who is here representing the, uh, the B I D for Elkhorn and Old Town Elkhorn, and, and I wanted, I didn't know if you knew the process, so I wanted to invite you up here if you wanted to say anything about the, uh, resolution number nineteen.
Oh, I'm open for Carl Anderson, uh, twenty-six nineteen North Main, the only main street in Omaha. A little jab there. Uh, I just want to thank you guys for all the help and, and this here. We've been working for, I feel like, ever trying to get our streets and our sidewalks down in the old Elkhorn area, kind of, at least up to ADA. And, uh, it, uh, I'm a contractor by trade, retired, and I'm so used to being pushed and pushed and getting it done tomorrow that, uh, the government stuff is frustrating for me. But I want to thank you for, uh, your help and your guidance, uh, I don't know where to go, and Franklin, and, uh, Brinker, and Amy, and Rich have all pushed us and nudged us in directions, and I appreciate that very much. So any questions about what we're doing, I think you can, yeah, question?
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Uh, Mister Jerem. I'm sorry, Mister Harding, were you done? Okay, Mister, Mister Jerem.
Yes, uh, first of all, I want to do is on item fifty-four, uh, point out that what we're doing here is eliminating this, the three-year sunset that was included in the original Blackstone Business Improvement District. You're on on fifty-four?
No, we're not on fifty-four.
All right, well, then I'll just talk about, I'm, I'm on fifty-four. I might even be at the Creighton game in my mind. So I gotta keep that in mind as I talk. But, um, the consent on item twenty-six and forty-two, we are there, right? I think I, I heard Levon and I heard, uh, Erin talk. So like so many of these others that, that you've heard from today, the point beyond which has already been made is the good work that they're doing, the tremendous successes that they're having is, um, the support that the taxpayers of the city communicate to us that they have for us approving these programs. It's, it's because they've seen the investment produce returns in, in human capital, in providing people in the case of chronic unemployment to the, the most at-risk, uh, people, young people and, and the organizations that are working there, to the very unpopular cause to try to prevent recidivism for those coming out of the prisons or who have been there and are just looking for options to a violent or crime-ridden life. And so the investments that we're making here, in some cases, individually seem modest, and they are, but they so often leverage other investments in the community that produce incredible results. And in those cases where they don't yet leverage other investment, um, they're still producing results. So I just wanted to, to, to thank the, my constituents who've shared with me their support for these programs because cumulatively today, what we've heard is, is just incredible, incredible, um, in, in what they're doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there, there are, the motion would be on item seventeen through forty-seven. Is there a motion? Moving seconded to approve item seventeen through forty-seven. There are no further lights, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Item seventeen through forty-seven are approved, seven to zero. Item sixteen, a resolution to approve a contract with Hawkins Construction Company for O P W five-two-eight-nine-three, being the Hundred and Sixty-Eighth Street, West Dodge Road to West Maple Road project in the amount of ten million, thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixteen is today, proponents please. You're, Anna, op? They're in between. Okay, well, we're going to create a new category this half called the in-between group.
Hi, everyone. I'm Diane Hanson, Kitty Lee Dance Studio, one sixty-eight eighty, uh, Parker Plaza, in Briar Hills. I'm here in most part representing, um, the business owners of Briar Hills. Um, we were to a meeting recently discussing the construction. It went from a two-phase construction plan to a one-phase construction plan, which then completely closes off the intersection at Hundred and Sixty-eighth and Blondo going east and west. That is our main concern. Um, we're pretty much, I think, on, on board for redoing the street, but it, it covers a huge amount, two miles of Hundred and Sixty-eighth Street. To get to our businesses, you have to go to Hundred and Ninety-second Street of Dodge, go across to Blondo, come back up Blondo to get to our businesses. Um, first, there's safety concerns at Hundred and Ninety-second that need to be addressed, as well as Hundred and Eightieth. So what we really are here to do is to plead for the intersection to somehow stay open going east and west, um, to get some kind of flow for safety reasons. I have students that drive to my studio. Uh, I know from parents telling me that Hundred and Ninety-second and Dodge is treacherous already, and we're going to add on many, many more people. Uh, it's just, I, I'm very fearful. There's no lights there. They say they're going to put lights there, but at Hundred and Eightieth Street, it's the same thing. So I guess I'm here just to plead with some reasonable solution to this intersection to help with our businesses. Um, I'm a family-owned business. We've been in business for over sixty years. I've gone through construction at Hundred and Twentieth and Blondo, did not face any problems, but our intersection wasn't closed off to our business. Um, I just know that there's a pet spa that was just opened. He opened it considering it being, uh, a two-phase project. His building, I believe, was like four million dollars, uh, opened in September. Now he faces no kind of, you know, traffic coming down Blondo Street. Um, we had a scooters that was ready to go in, but of course, they pulled out now for, until it's over. Uh, it, and there's just a lot of businesses that are small businesses there. I would hate to see anybody go under because of traffic. And, you know, mine's a drive-by traffic business, um, and I'm sure there's a few others. I know the spa is, the pet spa is. There's Family Video there, Marcos Pizza. I, there's just some concerns. Bally Barb Nails is there. She's very concerned. Um, so that's what I'm here to, to plead with you as a council, to help us kind of, kind of find some kind of a solution in that. Um, our property values for the year will probably go way down. You know, I would even plead for some kind of a relief there to help us with our loss of revenue. That was another thing, and I, I know there's probably laws, but to me, our property's not going to be worth during that year of construction what it's worth today or what it'll be worth after that. So I would even ask that you reduce our assessments for a year to help us compensate some of our revenue loss. Don't know if that's possible, but thought, thought I'd throw that.
That's possible, but you'd have to talk to the county about this. Thank, is that, does that complete your testimony?
I think, I think so.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents or in-betweeners who wish to be, uh? With that, the public hearing is closed. Uh, Mister Stube? of that might help us get through that?
Bob Stube, Public Works. I know there's some real concerns with regard to the property owners out in that particular area, and there's no question that originally, we were considering over a two-year period of time, but because of other construction projects that are occurring in the area, we had conversations with contractors, and their recommendation was, in order to be able to get the project done in one construction season, was to go ahead and close. I know that there's been questions with regard to compensation. It's something that I'd probably have to defer to the city attorney, but I don't believe that there's anything that allows, you know, within case law, that allows the city to compensate anybody for lost business.
So I guess, to reiterate kind of what you're saying, is that it would be better to do it in one session than to attempt to do it in two?
Yeah. Again, we looked at it from the perspective of two construction seasons versus the ultimate one. And again, one of the big issues we're running into is the fact that there's other projects in that particular area out there that are timed out. And we know that there, we always get complaints with regard to multiple arterial streets being closed during the same construction season. One of the biggest issues we're running into is that there's a project on Hundred and Eightieth Street that, with that particular project, which has federal funds in it, that Hundred and Sixty-Eighth Street was identified as a detour route in that particular project. And so with their anticipated start within 2019, we felt it was beneficial to try to get our project done within one construction season, which is 2018.
All right, thank you. I might have another question for you, but Mr. Harding, I know you wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to first of all thank Diane and the others who are here today. There was a public hearing, not a public hearing, there was a public meeting a couple weeks ago to address the issue on the construction of Hundred and Sixty-Eighth. And Gail and Todd from Public Works were there to conduct the meeting. And at the time, the proposed, or at the time selected but not yet approved contractor, Hawkins Construction, and in particular, Chris Hawkins, was there. And I think the messages that the business owners and neighbors expressed at that meeting were well-received by Hawkins Construction. And I think there's certainly a willingness and an ability for them to sit down with Public Works and try to address, I don't know what the solutions will be, but I know that they will certainly have open ears and open minds to address the concerns that were voiced at that meeting. I think, I think having Hawkins be the selected contractor, and I'm assuming we're going to approve them, that we couldn't have picked a better group, and I'm glad that their bid was the lowest so that we could go with them. But they'll deliver on time, they'll have open ears and open minds to listen to the concerns of the business owners and the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jarom.
Yes. As chairman of the Public Works Committee, this has been on our committee's agenda. It seems like it hasn't come off the agenda. It's been on there almost every month. One of the things I think we've been hearing from Public Works, and I'd like Mr. Stube to address it, in that there's no doubt your concerns as the business owners in that area have been heard, and they've been shared with our committee, that Councilmember Melton and Councilmember Palermo sit on with me, repeatedly brought it up. I think the situation, as I understand it, and I'm going to ask Mr. Stube to confirm it, is that we now have a bid document that we're about to accept, that they've recommended to be accepted, that contemplated one set of circumstances and timing that the contractor has relied in good faith upon to give the city its lowest and best quote, which, if we deviate from that, it would necessitate a change order. And so they were investigating, well, what, if anything, the cost would be to add these changes to accommodate the concerns that you have. And I just wanted to know from Mr. Stube, if you could confirm that, and then what's going on in that regard.
Bob Stube, Public Works. That is correct. And so if this is approved today, then we can actually sit down with the contractor, enter into an agreement with him, provide him a notice to proceed, have a pre-construction meeting where we can actually talk about the potential to allow the east-west Blondo Street to be open. Now, the contractor has indicated that, you know, his desire, in order to be able to complete the project based on the number of days within the contract, that it's beneficial to leave it closed, because he then has that northwest movement along Hundred and Sixty-Eighth Street we're working to be accomplished without addressing traffic. So we will have that conversation with him. Obviously, is that, you know, change orders sometimes have a tendency to be relatively one-sided, and so we will have to wait and see what information he can provide to us with the costs associated with doing that.
And in the overall scheme of things, if there is a desire to consider a change order to accommodate the concerns that have been made, and that's over nineteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars, that'll come back here to the council, right?
Anything over twenty thousand requires city council approval, yes.
But in terms of the people who took the time here out of their day to come and share publicly on the record their concerns, and well-founded in that regard, I just want you to know that, at least in the time that I've been on the council, when you get into a bid of this magnitude for this scope of a project, it would come to me to be quite surprising if, in fact, there is a change order, that it wouldn't be a substantial cost associated with that. And so while the city is considering these things, and I'm glad that they are, and believe me, they've convinced me that they're sincere in this effort, and that they hear you, and the two council members for the western part of the city have been pushing this, too. From my perspective, if there ultimately is a change order that comes before the council and it drives up the project cost substantially, it would be something that that concern might be difficult for me to overcome. So I just wanted you to know going into this, kind of my thought processes. But thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Great. I also sympathize with the business owners along this stretch. I do know that pain. I had a question for Public Works, though.
Bob Stube, Public Works.
Mr. Stube. So the original plan compared to the, I guess we could say, one-year plan, what do we assume that it will save the city in money to do this project in one year?
I'm not sure that we had a good understanding with regard to what the cost was based on a two-year scope, but obviously, the engineer's estimate for this particular project, I think, is close to fourteen million dollars. So you can see, based on the low bid that we received and the number of bids that we received, that there's a pretty significant reduction in that total cost. And so I think part of that is because of the fact that it is a complete closure. It allows the contractor to have full access to the site, and I think all the contractors that bid on the particular project recognized having that full access does provide them a significant amount of savings.
So help me out with my math. Is that roughly about four million, maybe, in savings?
I think three and a half million approximately.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do really think we ought to seriously think about the small business person, because as many years I've been into politics, we always listen to the big guy, the big company, and we seem to be able to do a little bit of moving with that. So I think when we hear what I call the person who's really trying to make it work, and they don't have all the assets of something as large, we ought to really think that through. I know sometimes we can't, because if this is going to cost more, because I saw they hadn't even go up higher than what you had, they said, four to five million dollars, we change that. But I do want to have a shout-out to Swain Construction, who are working on Hundred and Thirty-second and Pacific. They're still working on it, and they still have a lot to do. But when it first started, I thought it was going to be closed down for many, many more days. They found a way to make it work, and that, it was open, even though they're still working on it. So some of these companies, I know Swain, they apparently did, because I thought that was going to be closed down for a number of days, and they shortened that. So maybe where there's a will, there's a way. And I don't think we gave them any more dollars to do it. That's just what I'm saying there. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Is there a motion? Moving seconded to approve items sixteen. No lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item sixteen is approved, seven to zero.
I just saw the neighbors kind of sigh as though that was disappointing. What we just voted on was approving Hawkins Construction. And I think what, yeah, and what I want to say to you is, I'm very happy that Hawkins was the lowest bidder. So we look forward to continue to work with the neighbors and Hawkins Construction moving forward. Yeah, we know. Thank you very much for coming down. Thank you.
Item forty-eight, a resolution to approve the Eagle Heights Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located northwest of Twenty-third and N Streets in an amount up to three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley City Planning. The Eagle Heights TIF project before you is an opportunity to provide affordable housing in South Omaha. The part of the funding source is low-income housing tax credits. So what you see, I think you can see here, highlighted or shaded in blue is the site. There are three underutilized surface parking lots. This is Twenty-third Street, N Street, J.F. Kennedy. Twenty-fourth Street is here, so this is going north, just to kind of help orient you. So here is the site for the TIF project. This particular project does comply with the South Omaha Development Project, which was approved in 2010 by the council. And in that South Omaha Development Project, they identified some land for development, as well as infill housing opportunities. So this happens to be one of those opportunities to fulfill that development project plan. This is the actual site of the new campus, and as a result of a partnership between Arch Icon and the Nebraska Urban Indian Health Coalition, they're coming together to relocate their current headquarters, which is around Twenty-second and the Howard Street area, over into the Twenty-third, south Twenty-third and N Street. This existing building will become their new headquarters, and then this site here that you see in gray is the actual TIF project of the four stories, forty-four apartment units, a mix of studios, ones, twos, and three-bedroom units. As you may be aware, the Nebraska Urban Indian Health Coalition is only one of five such services in the nation, and their goal is to continue to provide their services to a lot of their own constituents, as well as those in South Omaha. The amount of the TIF is, of the TIF loan is three-hundred-and-ten-thousand. The total investment of this project is seven-point-eight million, and with that, I would ask for your approval. I will show you, do you have, a preliminary concept of the rendering of the site of the multifamily unit, and this is the corner of N Street and Twenty-third. So with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Donna Polk, and our address is twenty-two forty Landon Court.
Darren Smith, Arch Icon Development, five-oh-nine Walker, Woodbine, Iowa.
Thank you. Do you have any comments, or you just wanted to?
Just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom.
Yes, Donna, could you come back down? It's bittersweet day for me. I remember when you had me out to take the tour of your facility, and we walked the property, and you showed me the housing that you had created next door, and the programming going on inside your facility just east of Twenty-fourth Street in the Park East neighborhood. You have been a member of the Park East Neighborhood Association. You've participated, your organizations participated. You've been a good neighbor. You've done outstanding work. You had a dream for the old Lutheran Hospital, maybe going there.
Absolutely.
But as you move, and I look at the project and what you hope to achieve, to take your organization to even higher levels, I'm just very happy for you. So while I'm sad to lose you as an organizational constituent, I'm happy for Councilmember Palermo, and you'll be in good hands where you're going. So congratulations, too.
Well, thank you, and we're very happy to be relocating into South Omaha. I met with the acting mayor over there, Ben Salazar, to get his approval. And they're very excited about the prospect of having some development that will occur east of the interstate, because most of what has been developed has been on the other side. The other thing, I just want to take a minute to say how happy I was to see Terry Moore honored. Terry and I go back a long way. He really taught me a lot about being a good union activist. And so he does believe in job development, which is something I share. And I'm looking forward to being able to do some job development with our project in South Omaha. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President. Great. I'm not going to prolong the meeting anymore than we need to. I am ecstatic to see pictures of buildings like that, where parking lots have been too long, not to mention this is much needed. So with that, I'd like to move to approve.
Moving seconded to approve item forty-eight. No lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item forty-eight is approved, seven to zero. Item forty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of purchase orders to Say Flight Fulfillment, Inc., for a two-year price agreement for auto glass replacement and repair to be utilized by the Fleet Management Division.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty, an ordinance approving a real estate purchase agreement with the Church of the Sacred Heart of Omaha, located at two-two-zero-seven Worth Street, to convey the property located at two-two-one-seven and two-two-one-seven-half Worth Street, in consideration of one-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-one, an ordinance to approve the proposals of Rackham Corporation, Motorola, and Black Box Corporation to provide a fire station alerting system and installation for the Omaha Fire Department at a cost of two-million-four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and seventeen cents.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-two, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Douglas County in the amount of one-hundred-and-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars to authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's fiscal year 2016 Stop Violence Against Women grant to provide funding for one full-time misdemeanor prosecutor and partial funding of one full-time liaison in the Douglas County Attorney's Office Domestic Violence Prosecution Unit as part of the Douglas County Community Response Team.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-three, an ordinance to establish a new Class B flammable liquids storage district to be known as District Number B dash one-nine-eight at six-four-zero-four North Seventieth Plaza for Quality Living, Inc.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-three is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-four, an ordinance reauthorizing a business improvement district known as the Blackstone Business Improvement District to establish the boundaries of the district and the work plan with an approximate budget for the first year of eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars to provide for the assessment of properties specially benefited within the district and to provide a method of assessment to be assessed upon properties specially benefited by the district.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-four is today. Proponents, please.
My name's Adrian Hernandez, five-zero-one-five Underwood Avenue. I work at Dundee Bank. I'm here today in my volunteer role as president of the Blackstone Business Improvement District, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom.
Yeah, I just want to quickly underscore, this eliminates the sunset in the Blackstone terms of renewals. And the only reason there was a sunset clause in the original document or ordinance was because there was this challenge by Kiwet that they wanted to be able to see that this concept could produce results, and they thought three years was fair. Everyone signed off on that. And if you look up and down the Business Improvement District of Farnham, it's hard to argue with the successes that have happened there. I'd like to thank the BID for every month they meet, and they're dreaming big. They don't stop dreaming. They keep producing, and Bernard Indabash, City Legal Department, thank you for your efforts, too.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I just wanted to say I support this as well when we see it again next week for final approval, and congratulate Adrian and the BID there and Councilman Jerome for how well it's done. And I would just note on a sort of a bigger picture, in terms of BIDs in general as a tool, many of them don't have sunsets, but some of them have, but all of them that have had sunsets have proven their worth, and they're now on their way to removal and long-term liabilities. So I think that's just a note I wanted to make in terms of what they can do to transform an area, and that certainly has happened in the Blackstone areas, as Councilman Jerome said. It's visible every day, and I think it's a wonderful tool to encourage those type of things over the long term. Thanks.
Thank you. Public hearings.
All right. Non-action items, items 55 through 91, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and our vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting adjourned at 3:54 PM.